Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this public meeting of Jenkentown Borough Council for June 26, 2017. Ms. Foley, would you lead us into place?
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the law for which it stands, one nation under God, with the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Locke, will you do the roll call?
Vice President Buckner?
Here. Counselor McCarthy?
She requested to be excused.
Counselor Connors? I saw he knew he was running late.
Okay, he'll be here.
Counselor Farrell?
Here.
Counselor Danlet?
Excuse.
President Banker?
Here.
Counselor Ruhner?
Here.
Counselor Golding?
Not here.
Counselor McGowan?
Here.
Counselor Young? I saw her.
Oh, right, she requested it.
Yes, she requested it last I saw.
Yes.
Counselor Whitney? Here. Counselor Soltizier?
Here.
Madam President, you have a forum.
Thank you very much. Do I hear approval of the minutes of May 22, 2017, which are in your meeting packet?
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about those minutes? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show you now in the seat. Vice President Buckner?
Madam President. I move that we approve payroll stated May 25 and June 8. And June 22, an amount of $243,051.15 in invoices to $48,107.13.
Do I hear a second? Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let the record show you now in the seat. Now, I'm thinking that we should swear in...
You can move up the top of the appointment.
Yeah.
So I think go out of the agenda and make the first two, the most two, four and five.
Thank you. Oh, they're down at the back, okay, yeah. So we're going to go out of the normal course of the agenda and move to the order of business items four and five, the appointment of two part-time officers. Now, I asked Chief DiDavantino to... No, wait, we have to move to appoint them.
Yes.
All right.
Make the motion.
Sorry about that. Counselor Whitney, please pick up that appointment.
I will. Motion, I make the motion to appoint Cory Viada as a part-time police officer in the Jenkentown Police Department. So moved.
Do I hear a second? Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion, I make the motion to appoint Paul Donofrio as a part-time police officer with the Jenkentown Police Department.
Do I hear a second? A second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I apologize if I butchered your name.
You said it. Good sir. You're probably the first person saying this.
And now we'll ask the chief if you will swear in the two officers.
Well, I want to ask the mayor to do it, but first I'd like to thank Madam President and members of the board and Mayor Foley for this appointment. We've interviewed 18 candidates for the part-time positions and we narrowed it down to two candidates here tonight. And they've completed all police department requirements. And I would ask the mayor if he would be kind enough to swear their name.
Okay.
He'd be pleased to. Paul, Cory?
Mr. Ware, would you be able to get a photograph?
Cory?
Maybe I shouldn't come up here. That's all right. There we go.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're good.
I, Paul Donofrio?
I, Paul Donofrio.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law?
And the Constitution of this common law.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office?
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Put your right hand in the air and your left hand on the Bible.
Okay.
And smile at the camera. Cory, if you'll repeat after me.
I, Cory Viada.
I, Cory Viada.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law?
And the Constitution of this common law.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office?
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
That's it, congratulations.
I would just like to say before you, gentlemen, we're very happy to have you onboard at the Jenkentown Police Department. Thank you very much for your, we anticipate your good service, and we're pleased to have you as part of this team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And to the cheering staff, you're allowed to stay for the rest of the meeting. We also understand that you wish to leave this house. Thank you very much.
May I ask you just to be a motion to open the public hearing for 201 York Road conditional use? All those in favor say aye.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam President.
No, I'm not closing it all the way.
Thank you, ma'am. We have tonight a conditional use hearing for 201 York Road. A conditional use is akin to a zoning application in that it's very much like a special exception. There are various requirements under our code, and Midgard properties has to present their project and see if it is to your satisfaction. There would be an opportunity then for borough council comment and then public comment. Then council can either close the hearing and continue it to a later date, or close the hearing and perhaps take action on the ordinance later in the agenda. And if it's okay with you, Madam President, I see a representative of Midgard here. Perhaps he can explain briefly to council what this is about before he does so. I'm going to mark a couple exhibits. He has provided what's been marked as T1, a letter from June 25, 2017, which is a copy of his third floor plan. Also, I'm going to mark as T2, a copy of the advertisement of this conditional use hearing. And T3, a recommendation from our planning agencies on this conditional use hearing. If it's okay, perhaps to Representative Midgard?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Jeff Lustig with Midgard Properties?
He's probably my name.
L U S T I G.
Thank you.
Basically, what we're trying to do is what we've been doing in the borough for about a decade is take another building, create adaptive reuse, put four-plus apartments in old existing office space that's been vacant for probably 10 years. We'll narrate together just to explain that, ask him what we do, and do what it is, just looking for approvals.
And council members have the floor plan in front of them. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. You said four-plus, so I just wanted to know what the plus means.
We're at four right now.
You're at four right now. And what's your anticipated, do you have an anticipated projection about where things will go?
I guess it depends on the office space and the area. We still have it with one area that could be designated an apartment, but it's really been tough marking office spaces, unfortunately, in Jenkentown. Residential, if people are banging down doors to be here, it's amazing. So we'll see, I mean, I'll probably have to come back again if we go one more show.
That's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just to follow up on that, would the plus be on the second level?
There's like a half level in that building called a mezzanine level. So it would be on the mezzanine level. It's an interesting retrofit that they did back in the eighties, I guess.
Oh, I'll just comment, thanks for coming, Jeff. The planning commission did review these plans that are using in our meeting and approved them, so that had no issues, no concerns, as did the committee.
That's great.
All right, so...
See if there's any public comment or you can close the public.
Thank you very much. Is there any public comment or questions for this applicant over council? All right, then we will close the hearing for 201 York Road. Do I have to vote on that, or we just can vote it?
You can vote on that, so make a motion to close.
A motion to close the public hearing for 201 York Road. Second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. So you are welcome to stay. I think later in the meeting, we will move this forward by voting on the conditional use.
Can we just do that now?
You can do that now.
We can do it now? All right, we'll make our order of business shorter. All right, I move to approve the conditional use application for 201 York Road that is just presented to us.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Questions or comments?
Chief Cooper?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, let the record show you now.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're very excited about the floor plan, they look like green spots.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that we need to have a second public hearing. I move to open a public hearing to consider ordinance number 207-4 regarding vehicle storage and surface parking. And do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much, Madam President. We were asked to look at our definitions in our zoning ordinance related to surface parking and car storage, knowing that the plethora of these kinds of uses are becoming more and more prevalent in the borough. So we got together with staff, with Mr. Locke, various planners, and worked together on new definitions, tightening that process up. I'll have marked as T1, a copy of the ordinance, T2, a copy of the advertisement of this public hearing, and T3, the recommendation of our planning agencies. And just like the last one, if you wanted Mr. Locke or Ms. Farrell want to make a brief explanation of what this was, and then there would be public comment, you can close the hearing, not comment or not, whatever you want.
All right, thank you very much. So are there comments or questions with regard to this ordinance? I actually have a comment or a question.
It's a minor zoning, it's okay. It's a minor zoning change.
Okay. So my question has to do with what I have a hard time understanding the language in section B, 181-57B. And there are eight points under that, and we want any properties that are designated as storage or parking to have appropriate plantings and barriers. And so number six says, "No fencing barriers or obstructions of any kind are used to contain or screen vehicles," which leads me to believe that, like if I were to read that, I would think, oh, it has to just be an open lot. But we want people to adhere to the part of the zoning code that requires buffers and plantings and barriers.
Okay, we've re-advertized, you can page it, and we can readdress that if you want to do it, Madam President.
Or can someone explain to me how this, you know, it just doesn't seem ambiguous?
I think we just want to stress that we would like some green buffer around, about allowing these sort of...
It might need to be specific then. It might need to say that, because this could, I think you could interpret this as saying that that is not even allowed.
Or if we referenced the other part of the zoning code that...
Well, the other part of the zoning code exists. These, the zoning code doesn't act, this is just merely an amendment, this is not operating a lock vacuum, the rest is zoning code.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but George, can you help me understand that part of this?
Yes, I don't actually know why that is in this ordinance, but I know that our land development, they came in to do this, and they would have to follow the land development and subdivision, salvo, which requires a screening.
But is this in contradiction to that?
No, they're two separate bodies of law. No, they're not. As George said, you would still have to follow subdivision land development.
And that takes precedence over this? Is that what you're saying?
They work in tandem, but just because it isn't specifically said in this, doesn't mean they have to, don't have to comply in salvo.
What if the property is already an existing parking lot? Yes, Captain?
If it is existing, let's say not conforming...
That's not conforming to its grandfather.
The second it confirms improvements, then they have to comply with the law.
Then they have to comply.
We can't change anything that's currently, the cat's out of the bag, we can't change that.
Okay.
The trigger to that is improvements. After they come in for improvements, then they are proven.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you struck my research, did that get minor language change allowed, or would we have to go?
No, I think we would just have to re-advertise. So you know what, we can go ahead and continue this hearing to next month and clear it up. I mean, it really doesn't, it's not going to hurt the process. I mean, we just have to re-advertise.
I just want to make sure that it says what we want, because we want there to be screenings.
So Madam President, then what I suggest you do is you make a motion to continue the public hearing to next month, and then we will get back to address that and clean that up.
Okay, I should check with my colleagues. Does that make sense, or?
It does make sense. I hate to pay for the recording cost and advertising cost, but if you feel that it's unclear, I want you to make sure the ordinance is what we want.
I think if we're going to do this, it should be clear.
And if we're going to say yes to fence, or that yes to fencing or screening, we need to also be clear of what kind of, that's one screening that's aren't going to happen because of what we put up. Or just something really...
Okay, so I move to continue this hearing to next month.
What's next month's council date, George? Just so it's on the record, we have to re-advertise the hearing.
It is, I have it right here, is July 24.
So July 24, 7:00 PM at Jenkentown Borough.
Seven, okay.
7:30 PM.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a second? Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Sorry for that review. Okay, and I move that we go back into our normal public meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, our public hearing is closed. Thank you very much for coming out.
My pleasure.
All right. Next on our agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to ask a question or make a comment? Yes, would you state your name and address?
Thank you, down, 301 Renymoet. Just wanted to make the public statement for the record regarding the zoning ordinance, the ongoing zoning ordinance at 303 Renymoet Avenue. Jenkentown appeared in front of Judge McHugh on June 7, and the judge ruled and agreed in the borough's favor and found the tenant guilty of running a business in violation of the zoning code for the residential area of no impact. So, again, just wanted to make the public statement. I think it's pertinent, because it's been kind of an uphill battle, so...
Well, thank you very much for making that statement, and thank you to our staff and associates for intending and pushing this forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, would you stand and state your name and address?
Hi, Mary Jane Riley, R E I L L Y, 410 West Avenue. I was, I'm here to inquire as to whether the borough requires property owners to perform maintenance on their properties when it negatively affects bordering properties when this maintenance is not performed. My God, I sounded like Bridgette.
Yes.
It was a lot of negatives, so it's hard, I'm trying to...
That's why I sounded like Bridgette. Okay, George, what's going on with the trash and the pebbles that have been spewing onto my sidewalk and top garden for three years?
Trash? Is that...
Trash, I don't know about the pebbles.
Well, trash, I call when you have, you know, four cups of black pebbles on your sidewalk every day, it becomes trash. You've walked through them, haven't you, Davor?
Um, I'm not sure. Are you driving? No, I'm definitely walking there. I'm just trying to, I haven't noticed huge piles of black pebbles, but I've...
They're spread all over.
The paving is deteriorated, can I speak?
Yeah.
The paving is deteriorated. After you go over the sidewalk and into the driveway, there's two areas where the tires go, there's deterioration of the black paint on the property.
And which property is this that we're talking about?
412.
Okay, is that the one with the turret kind of?
No, the, the one right next to my house.
Oh, right next to your house, okay.
We notified the property owner that he needs to fix that asphalt. I know that they were recently notified when you contacted the borough, I guess, a couple weeks ago.
Okay, because I've also contacted the borough a year ago and two years ago. So how many years does he get to fix it, is my question, I guess.
I could give you the timeframe on the letter, but I don't have it formally, and I could get that.
Okay, no, I mean, I'm just saying, was he told to fix it two years ago?
I would have to look at the records on that. I know that everybody around here, he's done several things that you have asked the sidewalk to be repaired.
I didn't ask about the sidewalk, you asked about the sidewalk.
I asked about the sidewalk. I'm happy to admit it, we want our sidewalks to be in good repair.
And speaking of sidewalks, I have another question, and I'm wondering if the commercial district has been Xed.
Well, I'm just going to ask the manager to address that question, and by way of addressing that question, I will state that sidewalks and property maintenance have been all of our concern. We talk about it in our BZ and our building zoning and revitalization meetings, we also talk about it in public works and public safety. So we have kind of a, I'm going to say a multi-year plan of George and the zoning staff to go out and inspect the sidewalks, to mark them, and we have a paving schedule, and some of the sidewalks are tied in, improvement to those sidewalks are tied in of this paving schedule. And we have been working to improve in the business district, the maintenance and getting businesses to improve their sidewalks as well. We've also been, as you know, we've got a very big grant to do streetscaping from, remind me of the boundaries of Summit to Cherry. And we have put in an application so that we can continue that streetscaping, I'm going to say from Summit to Harper or to Washington?
From East to Washington.
Yeah, to Washington. And so we are waiting for some of those grant dollars to come in. We also have significant improvements planned for Washington to, how far does that go up?
The latest one with Abington?
No, the one that includes the gateway improvement.
That's between York and Greenwood. Have you never been to one of those yet?
No, the gateway treatment on the corner of Washington and York will include some sidewalk improvements.
That is correct.
Yeah, but I don't know how far up that goes. To Harper...
The sidewalks were marked up to Greenwood from York.
Okay, good.
So...
Well, speaking of streetscaping, is there any provision to maintain it? If you've walked on the 300 block of York Road, east side, it's in desperate need of repair. Well, resurfacing, re-leveling, I guess. And there are many places where there are Pico boxes that, I don't know whether they sank or were raised, I'm not quite sure, but they are certainly much more challenging than that little tiny nick that was out of the corner of my one block.
Well, let me just say thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we'll send our inspectors out to take a look at it.
You should maintain that, I mean, one snow and it's all ready.
Yep.
Okay, and we're going to see about those holes?
Yes, if you follow up with me tomorrow, well, actually, I don't follow up tomorrow, but if you follow up with me or email me.
See, I'm surprised, that's probably when I would follow up. Does he have to tell you, excuse me, does he have to tell you when he does it?
Yeah, he'll have to get a permit to resurface the property.
Okay, could I ask for a favor? The last time that an absentee landlord many years ago had that lot resurfaced, it burned my property four feet in. I lost a whole summer of garden because of the hot, the heat, I don't know. But if he's going to do a big hot job, could you let me know, or he let me know, or somebody let me know?
Yes, if they pull a permit to do the whole thing, I will let you know.
Thank you, I don't think they're going to, but, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mary Jane, all those to our attention. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? All right, thank you very much. Now we have two, well, I don't see a spinler, so we'll have one presentation from Marley Weiss and the Montgomery County Planning Commission. This is referencing our Jenkentown 2035 Plan.
I'm going to sit, I just need to give a quick slide. I'm just signing, I'm just putting them together. So, going to have some handout packets, so this evening I am giving you an outline of the full plan on the top sheets. And there's a set of tables, these are all of the recommended strategies, colorful table. And then there are the full drafts of the four theme chapters of the plan, which make up the bulk of the plan. That's where we have all of the recommendations, strategies, background information, photographs of the communities.
Amazing, yeah, the law is amazing.
Yeah, the love is amazing. So you also now have an idea of the design we're going with, four theme colors and icons for each of the theme elements, and really working to make this a very user-friendly, attractive document.
And I'll just say that these correspond to the big boards that were around. I don't see them anymore, but they were also really beautifully done.
So I wanted to mention again and thank all of the steering committee members. This group met pretty much monthly for a year and a half, working through all the different topics and topic areas of the community, guided the public outreach process from the beginning. Quick graphic that I think I've shown most of you before, the kind of what a comprehensive plan does. So in the middle, we have your comprehensive plan, which has a strong vision and was deeply rooted in community outreach, public involvement. And the state planning code requires that your zoning ordinance, subdivision and land development ordinance, and capital improvements program all be relatively consistent and working to implement the vision of your comprehensive plan. But we also are beginning to see that the comp plan will guide multi-municipal and agency coordination, you know, working with Pendot, SEPTA, their adjacent townships, and also grants, which... Don't have my next slide right here. Here, grants. So we've already had success with a recommendation from the comp plan to do a gateway treatment. So we've got a $73,902 grant from Month of 2040 program. It's about $93,000 total. And so on the bottom, you have the current view looking north at the intersection of Washington Lane and St. Alderick Road. On the top, you have our artist's rendering of what could be. So the vision was to reposition the historic monument, talking about George Washington's march up Alderick Road. Additional land sweeping that mirrored on both sides, so it'd be complimentary. And the banners are a custom design with the globe lights on either side of the road to be reminiscent of the gateway down by the Greenwood Avenue Bridge. And then a series of banners where we have more room on the former bank site. Our land sweep designer actually said that that was reminiscent of George Washington's march up Alderick Road, the banners are marching. And the design of the banners could be changed out for the seasons or other art initiatives that are going on. We've also included continental crosswalks and wider sidewalks. And there's also a bus stop where that black car is on Washington Lane in the upper picture, or both pictures, that's actually a bus stop. So there's a, a design to have additional amenities there, transit users. Also incorporated a small rain garden to manage one off from the the former drive-through circle in the pump bank company.
We're excited about that, we were just talking with Mr. Glanston.
Okay, awesome. It's very exciting to see that coming forward. And, and also, we're hoping that that design is replicable as we fill the gaps and we send along with our program. Might get other people thinking about and help beautify the property. So here are the four themes, the four chapters that you have in front of you. Neighborhood preservation, economic development, sustainability, and transportation. And before I mentioned those posters that, that we had here, we had an open house here in Borough Hall on Wednesday, March 22nd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., 52 visitors, many of which were, were business owners, because I could see almost all of them were also residents. And everyone was given a handout, an actual aside. So there were posters set up around Borough Hall, the four themes. And each theme, we called out nine recommendations or strategies. And people were given three votes for each theme. So they had to narrow down the nine recommendations for each theme, and they vote for three. So we got a sense of what people saw as, as the big priorities. So here, again, it's organized by theme. So under neighborhood preservation, repurpose green spaces. So definitely park access is on people's minds, Alberthorpe Park access, got a lot of votes. Preserve existing housing, institutional reuse, Jenkentown Borough Hall. Those are the top five. Economic development, talks about business development, you know, reducing the number of vacancies and continuing to widen commercial area, streetscape design, the Jenkentown Way Code train station. And it's nice to see that a new borough staff position for economic development got a good number of votes. It's definitely a recommendation in the comp plan and something that would make day-to-day implementation of a lot of the strategies in here more manageable, potentially. In terms of sustainability, people were very interested in tree canopy, something that's characteristic of the borough that people appreciate. Seems like some people understand the sewer capacity challenges unique to Jenkentown, well, stormwater management, recycling, renewable energy, transportation, of course. 37 votes for improving walkability on Alderick Road, which is something we talked about in the plan. It ties into traffic calming. Bike routes and amenities got 22 votes, that's a, that's a team. Road maintenance and train stations are in the top five there. So that was a really good event, see people up and up. So now I'd like to, to go over the, the themes again and just touch on what each of them embodies. It's something I, I learned early on about the borough is that, you know, people come here, people move here for more than just a home. It's like a way of life. You're, you're closer to your neighbors, it's a unique diverse community, very walkable, green, like the excellent access to transit and employment centers. So all of that is something we heard through the public outreach and is embodied in the neighborhood preservation chapter. We talk about prioritizing preservation of the scale and character of residential areas. The way they evolved is very unique. I'd also talk about health and, and public safety within the community, parks and open space, and institutional land use. The economic development theme, I believe this is the longest chapter, and the first element, commercial land use, includes a lot of great information. There's a retail demand analysis, talk about vacancy, new business types that we may want to look at, literally allowing in the zoning, main street management options. Overall, the vision is to build upon and support the growth of Jenkentown as an arts, entertainment, and dining destination, while building on a more cohesive commercial corridor as a whole. We've also, we've already mentioned to Addington Township that we'd like to look at, they just adopted a brand new zoning ordinance, but we want to look at the section, the northern gateway. And now we have a grant to improve the southern gateway, but we also want to look at the northern gateway, because that whole, several blocks that are happening, the town happened at Addington. So looking at coordinating our zoning and streetscaping efforts to, to make that a more cohesive transition into the borough. Something they, we're showing interest in. This chapter also talks about considering a borough staff position to coordinate business activity and promotion and provide support services. Should, that'd be very important to day-to-day implementation. Sustainability, here we talk about protecting and enhancing natural resources. Again, the tree canopy comes up a lot, so it's very important to both the neighborhood character and the, the natural feeling of the borough. In terms of water resource management, we talk about small-scale stormwater management, looking for creative ways like permeable pavers, rain gardens, rain barrels, to help manage stormwater runoff on a property by proxy basis. Also talk about renewable energy, sewer capacity planning. In terms of waste reduction, we look at improving overall recycling rates. It looks like the greatest areas for improvements are recycling on commercial business properties and institutions. And the fourth theme is transportation. And the four elements here relate to the four main modes of transportation, ways people get around. Of course, the age of transportation, we talk about Alderick Road, that it will always be a challenge, always have its successes and minuses. But it's a detailed outline of ways to evaluate conditions and continue to coordinate Pendot on ways to improve that, to balance the fact that we want it to be walkable while permitting it to be an important arterial for the region. We talk about the borough's inherent walkability and wanted to protect that. Bikability is a, more of a challenge, but we have some recommendations to work with Addington and Shelton Hill on trail connections, share roads, which are, when a road's not wide enough to delineate a separate bike lane, you can use signage and pavement markings and education to encourage people to share the road with bikers. And color transportation, the main recommendation is to continue to coordinate with SEPTA on stationary improvements that look at advocating for the, the high levels of service, high ridership, amenities that, that mom and I are seeing both Jenkentown Way Code and Noble Stations. But, but certainly, especially for the borough, Jenkentown Way Code is a major reason people move here, I believe, and a major attract factor. Major name recognition as well for the region. So, um, within the, the outline of the plan, again, the, the themes are the, the heart of the plan. There'll be some introductory chapters. We'll talk about the planning process and community vision. We also have a summary and a background chapter of geographic context, historical context, demographic data analysis. There's also a land use plan, which is less inherently applicable to a built-out borough. But it's a requirement of the state planning code, so I crafted it more around character areas within the borough and distinguishing between groupings of different types of housing and different characters of the commercial area. It's very closely tied to your current zoning boundaries. Then there's a section that's an overview of the theme and theme elements, and will kind of be a little primer on how to read the theme chapters in terms of the icons and how the recommendations are at the end of each element section. And then we go into the four themes. And then we have the implementation section. And I'm playing with two different structures of tables. This one shows the grouping of all of the strategies by recommendation in the same order as the theme chapters. And it also shows, when you look across the row, where a strategy has inner relationships to other elements. Like the first one, the NP1A, Neighborhood Preservation, Recommendation 1, strategy A, is to monitor proposed and completed developments, conversion, variance requests, et cetera, draft ordinance amendments as needed to protect the scale and character of residential areas. So we see that, that can also have implications for place-making and walkability. And the, the red dots, the color of the dots will change with the themes. That's indicating what strategy type we're talking about. And some of them have multiple types, because there might be, you want to do some additional planning to determine what ordinance amendment you're doing, and then you're gonna want to have private development take it over from there. So that would be an example where you have three dots under each of those strategy types. But the strategy I just read was a regulatory control recommendation.
Would you like to read the other strategy? There's six of them there, right? I'm just curious, what, what are those?
It'd be easier to read from a theme chapter.
Do you have that?
Yes, this is, I can find the page number for you. Yep, the recommendations in the neighborhood preservation chapter start on page 12. And also, the tables are somewhat related to be able to see as many and compare across strategies, see as many on one page. But really, going back to the, the theme chapters is where you get the nitty-gritty. I tried to include photographs with a lot of them to talk about the different conditions and recommendations. So that first recommendation, we're talking about preserving the diverse range of housing types that represent different time periods, architectural styles and building materials, and contribute to the historic identity of the residential community. So that's the, the recommendation. Wanting to preserve that theoretical aspect of the borough that residential areas have currently. So then there are three strategies under that first recommendation. Looking at zoning ordinance, where you have the traditional residential infill overlay ordinance. So kind of just having a procedure for keeping track of how you feel about applications that come in and go through that overlay or go through other zoning standards and see if there's something we should be looking to change to ensure that we're protecting scale and character for the apartments. The next strategy is talking about enhancing aspects of the community that make it an attractive place to retire and support residents who wish to stay in the borough from aging place. Some characteristics of the borough that, that make people want to stay here. Again, walkability, diversity of housing types, access to senior services, opportunities to engage within the community. So just wanting to recognize that. See that, overall, the age of the borough seems to be aging. I'm gonna fill up in this room also. And the third one under that recommendation was about education to residents about appropriate preservation maintenance techniques. That's what they're talking. That takes the form of, of in-person trainings. I know Lower Mary Township offers trainings on, you know, finding the right windows for your older home or insulation. I believe they get funding through CDDB to offer those programs. But a design manual can also be a good tool to inform people about valuable aspects of their, their residential property, how it fits into the larger history of the borough. And then I just wanted to describe what's going on with the, the tables that, that you have in your packets. These are all of the same strategies that are, that are in that previous table and are more in detail we described in the theme.
What do the column headings mean? I figured out zoning and, and, so what's, that's to be a...
Stormwater management.
Stormwater management.
And then a couple of might fall under other, like a property maintenance code or a natural features code or something like that. So now, I should go back in slides. So there are these six types of strategies. And now they're, I've rearranged the recommendations so that they're grouped by type and then ordered by priority. So the first type is regulatory controls. These will be your, your ordinance updates or code updates. So, and then I, I started to use stars, and three stars is high priority, one star is a low priority, but still a priority. So I thought that was more visually, more easily interpreted than using initials for low, medium, high, and things like that. So, so again, it's ordered by priority here. And still grouped in order of the, the themes and theme elements, but all of the three stars are at the top, three, two, and one. theme elements, but all of the three stars are at the top, three, two, and one. And then each of these tables is a little different based on type of strategy. So for this one, I have a column indicating which ordinances we're talking about evaluating. So again, go back to that first example of monitoring projects to ensure that your codes are preserving scale and character of the neighborhoods as you'd like. That would be, we wanted to keep track of the zoning and sound of standards that could help with that.
Marley, I could just interrupt. It was actually these headings that I was curious about on that previous chart.
And then I went off on a whole tangent.
So I'm just going to say them out loud because I think it's important to think about. There are regulatory control strategies, and then there are capital investment and staffing strategies, and then there are additional planning strategies, where we might need the services of planners, external coordination strategies, for example, coordinating with Addington Township or Cheltenham, private development strategies, and then education and outreach. So that's great. I appreciate the way this is put together.
Good, if I've come across a format that would be helpful. I was envisioning that something like that could be what you'd more easily reference in a meeting like this on a daily basis. Always have the full report to reference that to, but when you're trying to balance two project ideas, I hope that would be helpful. So, and next step. So I mentioned that there are a couple of supplementary chapters that I'd be happy to present to you as well. And then that's the full package. I mean, it's probably 95% done from my end, so we'd just like to hear how you feel about it and how you'd like to move forward with adoption.
Well, I think you should get a PhD in Jenkentown. This seems like a dissertation to the guys.
New head of information when people call.
Yeah. We've got a lot of reading to do. I, you know, I'll speak for myself, I can't speak for others around the table, but I think it's very impressive and I appreciate the organization and sort of the big picture that you put into all this, you and, so I just forgot her name.
Oh, it's been just me for
Oh, okay. It seemed like you had
Maggie Dobbs, that was the other planner, she's very helpful in the, when we're working with the steering committee every month and working with colleagues.
Yeah, that was great, too. So I want to thank you for all of this really good work. I think we have a lot to read and to digest.
Just a bit treating.
A bit treating, yes.
If we have comments on this, where do we, how do we get them to you?
Oh, here, I do have cards, I should have included them as packets.
Thank you. This is really exciting.
George has me on speed dial as well. Or my first.
And I have you on speed dial. So I was actually going to ask you the question of where are we in the steps? I know this needs to be at least communicated to surrounding communities.
Yes.
And so that is one step that we have to take. We also have to take the step of presenting it or having you present it to the planning commission itself, which I assume has been happening all along.
Yeah, Jim Rose was on our steering committee, so
Actually, I meant Montgomery County, but yes, Jenkentown's planning committee.
Yes, yeah, actually, the, I'm sure your solicitor knows this better, but you have to have a public meeting for the planning commission, discusses the comp plan and a public hearing at Borough Council.
It's similar to adoption and zoning, why not?
Yeah, I guess one of the, one difference might be that you have to send the comp plan to your neighboring municipalities and your school districts for a 45-day public comment period.
Yeah, it's in the municipality's planning code process. I can get it to George and make sure it's
And we are going to place it in the library. We'll have a copy here for people to review.
So your advertisement could list places where people could see the drafts, like we can certainly upload it on your website, have a copy here, have a copy at the library, maybe a copy at school, and of course, copy of the planning commission if anybody wants to come visit us.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
I'll just, I'll just comment, you know, reiterating what Navara said, we think an amazing package you put together. And we've talked, there's been so many pieces of this, and you really pulled it together into a cohesive report. And I really am looking forward to getting into it because there's great information in there, and the graphics are great in terms of understanding, you know, the prioritizing certain strategies over others and things like that. It's really helpful the way you put it together.
I want to add to that. I think that when you work so hard on something, it's nice to know that someone actually is going to be attentive to it. And I really am really excited about reading this. So I too want to thank you for giving us something that I think is so thorough and I think is really accessible. So I think it's going to be like a pleasure to my Thank you.
I forgot to mention that there are five appendices. Yeah, we have a detailed summary of all the public outreach, all the parking research we did last summer, the inventory and observation techniques, retail gap analysis is more in detail in the appendix, funding strategies, and a glossary.
Are we going to get all that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So are you going to give us physical copies like this, or should we anticipate it digitally? How do you give them?
Whatever you prefer.
I prefer the, I like to write them, so I personally prefer the physical.
Well, next time I'm before you, I'll bring all those supplementary chapters. Currently, they're all in individual files, so once they're all finalized, we'll get it all page numbers and footnotes will be continuous throughout. So currently, each section has its own page number.
This is perfect. This is perfect. Will it public, get all access to those appendices as well, where they can see them as well?
Yes.
And will they present those to the public as well?
Yes, I think it would be adopted as part of the comp plan as a full package.
So we should wait until we get that.
I don't know that I have any other comments. I mean, I feel like we should move forward. I haven't read it really thoroughly yet, but it just, you know, we've certainly talked about it enough, and I think it's really, you've done a superb job. We are already operating out of it. We are already taking steps that, based on the recommendations that we heard when our small groups were meeting and as we put all of this together. So I think it's a really wonderful roadmap for the borough and moving forward. So we probably should, maybe you and I can set up a timeline in terms of a couple of other public meetings. Where are the information we have to present to?
Yeah, I can certainly come before you again with all supplementary chapters and make sure everyone likes those little facts.
And then once you have that, Madam President, then what you should do is put a motion on the agenda to direct staff to officially begin the process, meaning because there's this, but then there's a legal requirement in the municipality's planning code, actually make it a legal process.
And I feel like that should begin in September.
Okay.
So we can aim for that. Any other thoughts? Anything from staff? If there's an extra copy, I'll look for Jim to have it.
Okay.
Yeah, there are two extra copies.
Actually, we ended up with three. I took one for us.
And I can send the PDFs if anybody else can use it.
Do you need anything more from us?
Well, it certainly sounds like I'm on the right track.
Over here.
Awesome. Yeah, each of these theme chapters was vetted by managerial staff back at the county planning commission, so transportation, I sat down with the transportation chief, and a lot of tweets were made from all of those meetings, but it's very close to being perfect.
I'm serious, if this isn't a PhD, I don't know what is, you know? But, no, just, I had anticipated that Steve Stindler was going to come and give us a little report about the biking event that took place in the borough a couple weeks ago. And on page 31 is what he was referencing. So you and I were kind of missing each other in our conversation, but I just wanted to go back to that because
She's talking about page 31 in the blue chapter.
Yes, I'm sorry, transportation chapter. Steve was really eager to have Jenkentown be added to the county map. There's a comprehensive map being made, and I guess right now, there's a gap where the trail comes, the bike trail comes, I don't even know.
Along Crookney Creek or something?
Along Crookney Creek, and then it stops in Jenkentown and then it picks up again later in Addington, so we want to close that gap.
Yeah, if they don't bypass the borough, there's so much here, like so much going on. Yeah, I can talk to the transportation planners about it.
George, maybe you could reach out to Steve and see if we could reschedule his presentation on his initiative. Great, thank you very much, Marley. Thank you, those who were involved in this, the steering committee, we really appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to move ahead with our agenda, and we have meeting reports. Marley, you're of course welcome to stay, and Jeff, you're welcome to stay. And won't be offended if you leave.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Let's have our committee reports. Vice President Bunker.
Thank you very much, Professor Panko. The report is in your folder. The things to note is that we've had some police overtime, which should be ameliorated by the two part-timers, so we're hopeful of catching up to our hiring plan. We'll fix some of that overtime stuff. We had a good conversation about modified accrual accounting, which, perversely enough, I found fascinating. I'm sure you probably believe you weren't there. An economic development proposal from a gentleman who is working with Will and Grove, I believe it is.
Upper Dublin.
Upper Dublin, and would like to maybe work with us on some economic development planning. And then of most interest, I think, Rick Riscott, our PIRCA website, to the point where I think in July it would be ready for the presentation of the program. So all of our borough finances back for multiple years, ready to be sliced and diced and analyzed and examined in a swift way, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Vice President Bunker? Counselor Carroll, building zoning and revitalization.
Thank you. Your packets are, or your minutes, rather, from the last meeting on the 19th are in your packet. I'll highlight Counselor Bunker referenced that meeting with an economic developer. Thank you, Manager Locke and Mr. Ware for initiating that meeting with that professional. I found the discussion on strategies to enhance our business retention and place making of the borough really informative. And again, it is something that was discussed in the 2035 plan, so we are looking to move forward on some of those initiatives. And additionally, I found we're getting the first glance at the Jenkentown train station accessibility improvements. We're getting our first sense of what that's going to look like, so we're continuing to want to be involved in that land development as that proceeds. And that's all I have, do you have any questions?
Well, I'll just make the statement that some of us are concerned about the way the land, or the proposed development of the train station is progressing, and would like very much for, the, SEPTA has actually not presented their current thinking to Jenkentown Borough, has presented it to Cheltenham. So I'd ask Manager Locke if he would try to coordinate a meeting so that we could get more information and talk with SEPTA officials about that development and see if we can have some kind of influence on
Madam President, I would, one of the things I would suggest is perhaps either you or Manager Locke write a letter or send an email to County Commissioner Ken Lawrence, who is on the SEPTA board.
Okay.
It would be a suggestion, and perhaps he can help entertain any
Great, that was me, too. Yeah, go ahead.
I was at the meeting when they discussed those plans, and they just were very disappointing. Sort of huge, ungainly structures chewing up a bunch of parking space when parking's already an issue. To my mind, somewhat pointlessly advancing the existing structure rather than finding some ways to work with it to make it handicap accessible to both sides, which could be done in a pretty straightforward way, just by making the pedestrian tunnel now accessible, you know, make it a little deeper and put the elevators in there and some of the huge towers over the tracks. And some stories of, well, different stories being told to different people at different times by the same SEPTA people about, yes, we're trying to get a restaurant in there, and then talking to real estate developers and saying, oh, no, you don't want to move in there, we're not even trying to. So I was kind of grossed out by a lot of it. It'd be good to have him come talk about it.
Agreed.
Yeah, I can say that the last time we met with them, with SEPTA, they really weren't all that excited about a restaurant because they didn't want to give up any parking.
Yeah, but then they're going to build all that stuff to help a third of the parking units.
And also, I think that frankly, and I'm going to say something that may not be too politically correct, I think Cheltenham itself has not been all that wise about, I don't want any kind of additional parking structure or anything over there, because the station is there, it was really there before Cheltenham was much of a thing, and they should consider, oh, we've got to accommodate these cars somehow.
So maybe we need to reach out to Cheltenham as well and see if maybe we can see what they're, what their thinking is? Do we know, do we have I haven't talked with Cheltenham Commissioners, they're a very active Cheltenham group that are against the parking garage, so they've been, they have come to our
They'll want cheltenham.org, it's actually where you can get a lot more information about this plan rather than get it from SEPTA, because that's not that forthcoming. But we definitely plan to be involved in this process so that Jenkentown's best interests are
At least her.
Addressed, yeah.
It really is stupid to have that beautiful building over there.
There's no plans.
And just
Yeah, and deteriorate.
And rot, yes, until it's bad enough that they can
Just to start tearing it down anyway.
It's a shame.
Okay, well, it's good to hear that we are all in agreement that we should keep pursuing greater involvement in that, in those plans. And I will write a letter to Commissioner Lawrence. I have also been thinking that we should get some of our state elected officials to come and lend their voices to the, to the planning as well.
And if I may, this is perfect time for Counsel to voice your opinion, because the intent of the public meeting right now is to have everybody on a consensus that, yeah, what we're going to do with you for the next six, seven months, you're okay architecturally, or we're going right now with someone in Landevo, which means you only review for compliance review of subsequent land development ordinances. So this is perfect time now before the, the land development application is made.
No land development application has been made.
It will be made.
It will.
Yes, I know for a fact that land development application, two of them will be made, one in Cheltenham and the other one is here. So they must comply with the ordinances, and this is not a condition used for any zoning operation that they made where you can enforce architectural compliance, if you will. This is just trade land development and not much, you know, teeth in there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we move on to hearing from Public Safety Counselor Whitney?
Well, Madam President, I know the Senator, your practice, I was absent because of Well, Madam President, I know the Senator, your package, I was absent because I was out of town with business management, but I understand it was a lively meeting, and we had some discussions, and I know I've participated in some ways about the whole thing on the fire safety and the training and everything, and I think I can just say there's more to come on that.
Okay. Do you have anything to add? Did you chair that meeting?
I did chair. So that's exactly right. There is a regular issue. We had a third-party study done evaluating the training and procedures and readiness of the fire departments in the borough, and they gave us back some very good recommendations, which in fire commission meetings were, seemed to be acceptable. And then we sort of out of blue got a letter from President Adair, the president of the Pioneer Fire Company, very aggressively rejecting the recommendations of the study, and we're going to have to figure that out, or I'd say that the borough's funding for that fire department is at risk, and their continued use of the fire equipment is at risk, because we can't have a fire department that doesn't have their officers trained for the appropriate services. That isn't being safe. They have to be safe.
Madam President, I will say, because I remember in FPA, and also I remember, I wasn't a firefighter then as well, before I got a little bit back, and...
You're not that old, sir.
I get that all the time. But I will tell you that they are the only pioneer in the old fire company for all of Montgomery County, and one of the few in Eastern Pennsylvania that has not complied. I think that statement stands, and so we really don't have to say too much more than that.
They have taken some steps. There was one level of compliance and reporting that they have corrected, but there's still a lot of training, recording, et cetera, that we have to address.
Okay. Well, thank you all for that work, good work, and I assume that these conversations will continue.
Or definitely, we would, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Police support.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think a meeting has been proposed. Is that, did that meeting get delayed, Manager Locke?
Yes, it has not been set up, a location, a little bit discussion.
Okay.
I'm not going to Pioneer.
There's a proposal that we meet with members of Pioneer, and we have proposed that Pioneer come to Borough Hall and meet with us. In fact, we proposed to meet with them, I thought it was prior to one of our meetings, but we'll work out the date.
I just want to say that the things that, the recommendation, the recommendation came from, you know, a chief from Philadelphia, a very well-qualified guy, are not anything that all of the other volunteer fire departments around here comply with, including our other volunteer fire department right here in Jenkentown. So we're not asking for them to perform any unnatural acts. It's just to be the same as all of the other volunteer fire departments around.
To be trained to their highest standards.
To be trained that they have certification of that training and to report activities to the state. I think it's really kind of...
All right. Thank you for that. Public Works, Council comments?
Thank you. The minutes on the Public Works meeting on June fourteenth are in your packets. I'm about two months out from paving. The bids have been out, they've come in, and they're currently under review, so a recommendation is forthcoming. Look around us there.
Any questions on this? All right. Jenkentown School District, Council McLeod.
Manager Locke and I met, member of the school district last two months, two weeks ago, I guess, on the fourteenth. They were really appreciative of the waiver policy for the ice cream truck. They thought that it was done timely, and they were really grateful for that, so we'll talk more about that in a little bit. They approved their preliminary budget at their June ninth meeting. There's going to be a three-point-three-eight mil increase in taxes to make up for the deficit that they're facing, and their remaining funds are going to come from the surplus, so there's a consistent kind of struggle. We're not unique in that way to how we're going to fund our students. The construction project is underway to replace the media lab and then to add three additional classroom spaces, and the goal is that those things will be done by the end of the summer, and they communicated a desire to have all these freshly completed before school begins.
And we have that same desire.
We do, and we are really, we're still, we're really committed to doing everything we can to support the school and make sure that they have what they need, that they feel very, so we're doing our best in that regard.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Council Farrell, anything from the FPA?
No, we did not meet, unless I missed the meeting. It was the run, so there might have been a schedule, meaning it was rescheduled, I entirely missed. My knowledge, I have no idea.
Okay. Fair enough. And plans are afoot for the Arts Fest.
Yes, things are moving along. I would have got an email if there was any hitches on that front, but I do believe things are moving along.
With regard to the multi-municipal group, I have an email here from Council Golden that's reminding us that Building One America is having their biannual conference on July twenty-first. I forget the location of that, it's in New Jersey.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I can't remember. So that's on the multi-municipal. Public Works Report, Mr. Riggins.
How you guys doing tonight?
Good.
My report is in your packets. Not much to highlight, a bunch of meetings. We did coordinate one with the McCoys for the five K, five K race throughout town. One was the color race, the other was the sunset. It complied with everything we asked them, built up all their trenches, removed the plates. It was a successful running, to where my knowledge, no one was hurt, and so that was a good thing for the town. Other than that, you got any questions or concerns? I'll be happy to answer or respond.
You go. Well, I'll say two things. One is I've noticed the street sweeper out in Morton, so that's good news. And also, in your report, it, there's a highlight that you and Manager Locke attended a meeting with Abington Township about applying for a joint grant to address drainage issues at the intersection of Greenwood Avenue and Washington Regent. And I just want to applaud that, thank you very much. Keep up the good work, because we really need to do something at that intersection. Yeah. Anything else for Public Works? Okay, very good. Enzo's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A copy of my GM line report is in your packets. I would like to highlight a couple of items that I have for you tonight. The first one is, I am back in front, Council, you have an update pertaining to the East Central A project in Cheltenham for the SUR. Cheltenham had opened their bids a few weeks ago, and they got a total of five bids ranging anywhere between eight and a half million to eleven million plus or minus. The question that was raised to me after the next meeting, whether or not we know or we have an idea about phase four, because this project right now is a combination of phases two A, two B, three, and a portion of four. As of now, phase four is yet to be known, we have not identified what the exact scope is. It is an absolute unknown. We know a location for it is between manholes A thirty-one to A one, that doesn't mean it's thirty-one manholes, because there's our gaps in between, but we have a method on front to get a, conceptually, what we're dealing with here, so the borough can find out what kind of share you're responsible for. Because, and I'm not sure, George, maybe you know, if the township had it would be there, but they have, they have a check, it looks like they may be going towards the eight-point-five million, and then you're at eleven, eleven percent, and that would be about nine hundred twenty, nine hundred and thirty thousand. So I'm sorry, I have no update for you on phase four, but was told, gonna try. The second report that I have, just want to brief Council that we're in the process of evaluating the stormwater backup and a possible resolution of all that and T. Available to answer any questions or the amount of the report, I'll provide any recommendations there.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Mayor's Report. Oops, nope, I skipped over Solicitor Kilpenny.
Thank you very much, Madam President. As Ms. Downs reported, we went to court and resolved a situation with three oh three Renne Mead Avenue. This was essentially a matter that was left open from January, and Judge McHugh asked us if there was additional information to present to her. And when Ms. Downs came forward with others in April, I wrote a letter to Judge McHugh. Judge McHugh called a hearing, and that's what we, that was the subject of the hearing. Ms. Downs and former Councilor Durkin testified, and many residents came, and the judge ultimately found, found a violation of the zoning ordinance, as was said. As I said to Ms. Downs and everyone at the hearing, if there are additional violations, please bring them to mine and Mr. Locke's attention, and we will evaluate them. Other than that, been working with Mr. Locke and staff diligently on several right-to-know requests, and several borough ordinances, look forward to working with him on the implementation of the comprehensive plan. And Madam President, that would conclude my report.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Okay. Mayor's Report?
Thank you, no report at this time.
Well, I would like to applaud the efforts that you have put together to, for the film viewing on Town Square on Friday night.
Not just me, but thank you. Ally Lester of Groundwater Engineering fame is...
Well, good. That seems like a great group. I wasn't able to attend on Friday night, but I'd go by, and it looked pretty well-attended. If we could do it again, maybe, like a regular thing. It sounded like it. Chief Dean Valentino?
Thank you, Madam President. Just have a couple of things. On the twenty-second, at the train station, we had our coffee with the cop that went very, very well. A lot of people showed up, had some coffee, we had some good suggestions.
Which side were you on? Inbound or outbound?
Inbound. But it was, it was nice. People came up and they enjoyed it, they had some comments, they had some suggestions that we brought back at our debriefing, and we discussed what we were told, and then we would address them, could reassure everybody that we would address their concern. But we had a good time, and they had a good time, you know, like, and we're planning more around the local restaurants in town, but not for a couple of, a couple of months.
Great.
And also, tomorrow I'll be at the Cole and the Synagogue for the integration forum, so I would be glad to be there.
That's from seven to nine.
Seven to nine.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, so I'm looking forward to that, see how that goes. And I just want to let you know that I'm aware of the overtime issue, Vice President Bunker, but we were still investigating this theft of vehicles around town, we're still being played with that, not only us, but Abington and Springfield and Cheltenham as well. So I'm aware, I'm trying to keep a lid on overtime, however, I did meet the command staff and the officers at local, and we're not just going to sit back and hope we bump into this and catch the guy. We're actively on top of it, and we have people out on foot and on bikes, which is going to incur overtime, but we have to get a handle on it.
Is anybody breaking into any cars that were locked?
No.
That's what I thought.
It's good to remind you that, there's a couple of factors, and yet again, of lock in it was.
Now, I just, but we're trying, we're coming, there's little minute clues that we're coming up with, but there's no set pattern. So without a, without a pattern, it's very hard to attack it, so I'm aware of overtime, Madam President, but I have people out there and fully capable.
Well, thank you very much for your diligence.
Is it true that one of the residents, I think on Vernon, car was entered, but they found nothing in it and accidentally dropped and left a ten-dollar bill behind?
I hope it's true.
That's what I heard, Robert.
Oh, wait, that was my ten dollars.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's it. We can post that whoever left the ten-dollar bill, and said, "Resident's car, please come to the police station to pick it up."
Please come to pick it up.
Do you think it's one person or do you think it's many?
No, it is, this is a, this is a...
Every summer.
This is a combined effort.
It's a ring, right?
Because, we believe so, because Abington now is being hit on the east side of the township. Jenkentown, they're being hit in the Jenkentown section, Cheltenham's being hit in the Windcoat section, Springfield Township's being hit right over the border of Cheltenham. We thought we had this thing tied up last night, this morning around three-thirty, but we're still looking into that. So each time something happened, but the main thing we're trying to get across to people is, please lock your car doors. I just can't seem to get that across to people, just lock your doors, and makes it very difficult. But I'm sorry for the overtime, Vice President Bunker, but I'm going to stay on top of this until we get the guy.
Thank you.
We're down.
I think you were just dismissed, Mayor. You didn't even react to that.
I think that was the response to a lame duck mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Manager Locke, do you want to give us a few highlights from your report?
Yes, it's been a pleasure. I only have a couple of things, and I do have something to bring up on the new business that just transpired concerning the CBNG grant. But the LED lighting procurement project is due to start within the next two weeks, restart within the next two weeks. We've pretty much solved all the issues that we had with it. We had a couple residents that had complaints come to the last committee meeting and say that the measures we took corrected it, so that was a reinforcement that we gladly accepted. There is a ZHB hearing that will be held on July sixth at seven PM. It's for Six Ten York Road and Faulkner Nissan, Faulkner Nissan has applied to put parking in a lower area. One evening meeting, zoning hearing, board hearing was held, it went two or three hours and then was held over for this day here. That will be happening on July sixth, and that's really what I have in your packets on my report, if you have any questions. We have several grants running concurrently. We have eight open right now, and the Wood Memorial, which we applied for, they actually emailed me today and asked for clearer pictures of the monument, they said it will help our application. They're not awarding it till September, but they reopened ours so we could add pictures in, which was very nice.
Good.
I'd like to answer, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Any questions for Manager Locke? I will not be available to come to the ZHB hearing on July sixth, and I wonder if there are others on council who will be able to come. I can come. Oh, great, okay. I think it would be good to have at least one.
I think when we talked about it, I was the only one to come that week.
Only loser who's not in vacation. Lock your doors. You'll be alone in town. Yes. Okay. Thank you for doing that. All right, so in the order of business, we have already taken care of items one and two. Item three, I move to approve the waiver request on behalf of Ashraf Solomon, who is the owner of Blue Bunny Ice Cream Sales, he may not be the owner, he may be the franchise person for Blue Bunny Ice Cream Sales, to allow for the solicitation and street sales of ice cream within the borough, provided that Mr. Solomon complies with all requirements set forth by Borough Council. And those requirements, do we have those in our packet? And those requirements, do we have those in our packet, Manager Locke? Okay. Oh, I got it, right there. All right, so a lot of thought and consideration went into these requirements, and the main, you know, one of the main revisions to this waiver is that no ice cream will be sold on the streets that are abutting the school district. And this was at the request of the school district, so those streets are actually outlined in this document that sets up the conditions. Is that only while school is in session, or? Well, I had that same question. Do you know the answer to that?
I didn't hear a question, I'm sorry.
Is it only while school's in session? It seems like you should be able to go anywhere.
We didn't specify that, but there is, there is a payment here for this solicitation preference made one to Labor Day.
Okay, so it takes care of that.
Can I make a comment on that? I don't know if you want to change it based on what I'm about to tell you, but when I talked to the superintendent, I specifically asked her that question, and she was very happy with limiting, once school is out, limiting that prohibition to Florence Avenue, because she didn't want kids running off the playground and make traffic.
Okay.
If y'all are happy with, it reads as it reads now, and that's why I would also point out that, and the chief is probably aware that Mr. Softy man is also circulating in town, so.
Yeah, I actually think we probably should leave it the way it is now, because not only is Florence dangerous, but I saw Mr. Softy on Walnut in my block, and that is really dangerous, because --
And Mr. Softy has no permit.
That is true.
This specifically is Mr. --
So I can't run fast enough to catch up with Mr. Softy. But I should call --
Be that as it may, we still have to be fair.
I should call 911, I guess, if I see him. All right, so I've made a motion, is there a second? Okay, is there any more discussion? We sort of did that out of order. Any more discussion or questions?
You press me.
You press me, okay. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Very good. And we've already asked the police if they would be, if they would have copies of this to hand out, so I would appreciate if Mr. Softy would come in with his petition, and anybody else out there. Those are the only two I see. Okay, thanks so much. We've taken care of the appointment of the two part-time officers on Items 4 and 5. Is there any new business or discussion? Yes.
Madam President, I have something to bring up. We were notified by the county that it looks like we're going to get the 2017 CDV grant. It's a lot less money to put in for, we put in for about $100,000. We got, we're going to be awarded $75,000, and that's for the continuing accessibility grant project.
Right, Chuck.
Thank you.
They attacked Sleep Well.
What they're recommending is that, and it makes sense, the engineering part is a good idea too, because they said if we combine the two projects, if we hold up on bidding the 16 project, combine the two, and Counselor Conrad, apologies, it's just transpired.
Quite all right.
Combine the two, save the burden that they expect money, they advertise the money, it's probably 15 grand, 20 grand, but you'll spend that at 75, and they're looking to get the most 900 bucks too, so they said if you're willing to put them together and we just bid it one time, that's what they recommended we do. And we would just like permission to hold up from bidding the 16 until the 17 is prepared by the county.
That makes sense, yes, yeah. Very good, thank you.
We actually might even get a better bid, because we'll put in more, and we'll get out the, that's the cost of the --
Exactly.
And from a finance perspective, we also approve spending later.
Yes, and less. Is that it? All right. We do have need for a brief executive session to discuss matters having to do with real estate. And so I move that we adjourn from a regular meeting.